You get the car, all right? No, I just still had the car in there.
Can I stay there till eight?
No, I don't think.
I'm sure she'll be happy. If you told me to pass it along, I didn't see it.
And the safety lock.
So, did you say he has a bike that gets thrown?
Oh.
I think he changes his race.
I have a race accident.
So, like, physical, look at it.
No, never let your sixty-seven, three-hundred-and-seven, hundred and thirty.
Do you guys, can I give you the DM stock?
What?
Um, I think you guys should think of this. I'm not changing. I'm thinking you might not have. Yeah. Where is that, in your big packet?
Yep.
I just got it. Not right here.
So, how do I didn't see you today?
I was there yesterday.
Oh, your mother was there?
You were, yeah, you were buried in people, so.
Private fair.
I was there all day Sunday, I was there all day yesterday. I was rocking, I had Lincoln says, I want somebody to go and take over. Because I wanted to see those guys there singing. The name of the group is Hurricane.
Light on. I know. Uh, our constable is there, I gave him the night off. Oh, start. Maybe like, walk into the river, the lights down the road. Okay. Yeah. Okay, we're gonna start tonight's, um, first part of the meeting, which starts at, right now. Um, and we're gonna be doing a public hearing for general assistance, the ordinance amendments, which we do every year, and the state puts forward more ordinances for general assistance. So, this is an open forum, if anybody wants to talk about general assistance, that's what we're here for, for the next fifteen minutes. Every year, they give us new, um, uh, general assistance max. Max well, so a lot of people in, in households, and food max wells, and heating fuel, and, um, based on how many people you have in your household, and, so, there's a, there's a, a lot involved with, if someone comes to town and asks for general assistance, they go through.
That was never from what you might get from the state if I don't.
Yep. General assistance through a town, if you come and apply, which we have a notice outside, um, it has to be an emergency nature. It has to be like eviction, or damage, or you're shutting your heat off, or something of that nature. It's, that's what gen- general assistance says when we call the state and say, here's a scenario, they go, is this an emergency? It's not like an ongoing, every month, we're gonna come and, and apply. It's more supposed to be, if, if someone has an emergency, that we're gonna help them out, to get them through that, to get into another system, or to get them through this, whatever scenario they're going through. Yep.
Can you ask somebody else?
What's that?
Can you ask on behalf of somebody else?
They have to ask.
They have to ask for themselves.
So, can you ask, do you, what if there only means a heat fire?
Right.
Is that something that you can help with?
Um, I've never had that asked before. I guess it would mean whether they have any heat or not. Yep.
I know Harper does have a wood bin, it's through, um, a church group. So, there's options out there.
Ron Darlin, what was that?
And we wouldn't even know about it if you hadn't just asked.
Can somebody get any information on that thing?
Um, you can call ahead.
I'd rather not pick their name up here, but we have somebody that would desperately need to do it. Does, is the person calling you to touch it? Uh, yes. So, you can also call me to touch it. This person's too bad to call me as well. And he, 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 I know for a fact he needs help.
Yeah, this is through the town, they just volunteer, they have kids come up from New York, a church group, and get the wood ready, so, give it out to who needs it.
I think it's pretty much under the cuff, you don't hear a lot about it.
Yeah.
You know, nobody's bragging about it or anything, but if you do need it, it's always a, how that can be.
I know a lot of times, it's neighbors helping neighbors, if somebody needs something, and a neighbor helps. I know Kathy's taken in people when we had huge flooding and no power. I know this Kathy took in people when they had a fire. So, I mean, we've got a lot of great residents in this town that would love to help.
So, are we going to change these things, or is it?
So, once a year, the state puts out the general assistance maximums, it's a reference sheet for Oxford County, and basically, we have a forum every year, the public can make comment or read through it, and, um, and we share that feedback with, uh, within the town and within the state, if there's anything that we need to share.
Probably the town could decrease the maximum. Right?
Increase. Or decrease.
Decrease, whatever. I mean, we could make it more open if we wanted to, right?
Yep.
What do you mean more open? Allow.
If they even, if they exceeded the maximum, they say they made way over the maximum, but they were in a urgent situation. We could change, we could make the decision here to do something different. First calling to the general assistance bank, and.
Yes, sure.
This is all really new to us, because we haven't had a approval in a while, so. There is a notice, it's posted just outside the front door, that talks about general assistance, and we have an open time on Wednesdays, right? The people can come in and apply personally. You can also access a form online.
We are over budget this year already, so there'll be an article at town meeting to cover what we expect this year.
Yep. It's a tough year for everybody. As Kathy, this Kathy just mentioned, also can cover cremation and burial, or help with that.
I have a question, when somebody comes, do you, you guys decide with committee, what's we need allowed for?
One, one of us spearheads it, contacts the general assistance number, which is on this form, and we talk about the case, and talk about what their income is, what their work capabilities are, and then that one person communicates, they have to meet with the applicant, and, um, and then we work together as a team.
Correct, we're not just handing over money.
Correct. Because that's your money. That's everybody's money in the world, that we're handing over, that, yep.
Did anybody lose power from the accident?
Ben?
Did you, Ben?
Well, we shut the car off, but we didn't, we didn't put it in the pool.
I saw the car being pulled, when I came in over.
I guess the people was in Germany, they said. It was two couples.
We talked about putting boulders here, but then someone would probably die from.
Unlucky someone wasn't in the house.
In the water.
I mean, they died, what I meant was, she said, boulders up, they die, I think that someone in the house could get hurt, too. I'd say, how about one of those, like, Looney Tunes elastic fence, they go.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, ovens. Can I, should I end the public hearing at six-thirty as planned? Why have to do that? Still got a couple minutes, somebody might have something to share.
Oh. For this share, you were, you were putting a vote.
Yeah, uh, no. A display to get the town hall. Stephanie Dunn's house, she's been bringing this.
Get some information, Stephanie wants to bring a sign, she will, please give it to her. To the hall, to put a little off, please, so it gets, it's more smoky, more cloudy.
That's a cool idea. One hang of old sign that came from the Grange, and then.
Green, no? Green store.
Oh, the grain store.
With, she just says it puts her grain with, she's just.
About the grain, grain store. How far down is the old grain store?
So, um, it was on Old Route 140, and we put it across the street. Right next to Mr. Stee.
Oh, yep. I know where Steve lives, but also where his house is on 140. Okay, I'd like to end the, uh, public hearing for general assistance. And the ordinance amendments, do we need to vote on that, or just farther down?
Yes.
Okay. I'd also like to call this meeting to order, I want to remind everyone that we are adults, we're gonna be nice to each other, and, um, please raise your hand, let me know who you are, um, when you get called on, so you can speak. We do have a three-minute, um, limit, which hopefully, we will never get near, and, um, so, uh, without further ado, I call this meeting to order, and I'd like to do the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First on the agenda is approve the minutes from September seventeenth, and September twenty-fourth, and September twenty-sixth, selectmen, meetings, and workshop.
There's a couple of typos.
Okay, do you want to change some? Including the motion?
I move we accept the minutes with revisions to the typos.
One second.
Favor?
I did change some of those, maybe a no.
All right, next on the agenda, we want to approve the warrant number seven, and parole warrants, September eighteenth, and September twenty-fifth. And I think they're all signed, right, no? I need a motion. Great, all in favor? Did you email out the RSU tenant report to print it, Leah? RSU tenant? Okay.
Do you have it?
Yeah, no, I just didn't, I, it came in yet before the last meeting, so. Um, going to the reports, the RSU tenant report was emailed out to us, and it's out front, does anyone have, on this table, does anyone have any questions? Hi.
Just wanted to let you know that there's a community forum tomorrow, five in the morning , there's a community forum tomorrow, right at five-thirty at Buckfield Junior's near high school, to discuss the, the, um, options for Wesley building.
Thank you. Will you be there? Will you be there, too?
I will, Chad will be there, I have soccer friends.
Gotcha, yep. Multitasking, good job. Do you know what time tomorrow night?
I believe it's at five-thirty, and then I will chat.
All right, road commissioner report, which we have. Anyone's like to add anything?
No, I think it's all there.
Great, is that up here also, so people could grab it? All righty. I have a question, it says on your report that you're gonna need more, um, cold patch, is it, for Gurnee Road, did the pile that was left went up there to, Ben?
They used all of them, they finished it. They did some off where it fell, but only with a critical one in the middle. Um, and they also were pretty tired, and the church should be going to hit some of them, but they told them to just get the ones in the middle, until we get a more tight patch.
Okay. All right, is there a road committee report?
Um, the only thing we got to report is, we're concerned about getting the roads rated before winter, and we have that one option, and Wesley went around with the gentleman to look at all the roads, and right now, I think it would be the quickest way, and the most effective way to get it done. So, it's gonna be up to the select board to make that decision.
Yep. Ben, how do the roads stand if we were to rent a piece of equipment, and, and you do the roads?
Uh, we just get a cheap, or you're doing that, you know.
So, I don't, I, I guess I don't understand the, um, uh, is it the road commissioner's supposed to do the roads, and gets reimbursed, or can it be, is it an external contractor through McNeil Farms, through you, or?
No, the town is always willing to rate, and thank you twenty-one dollars an hour we brought that plus the fuel.
Okay, so if we were to rent one, through the town?
It would be the same, it would be the same, you pay the renter, just pay me a, me a rent.
Okay. Will it be able to crown the roads, and clip off the sides where Brandon's had to do the skid steer after dragging the roads?
Some of the roads, you're gonna be dying to eat the grater off, because there's nothing there, but if you run the skid steer down, clean the water, turn out, things like that, um, not all of the roads, you can go greater, there's nothing there for the dirt. Um, what I'd like to do for the next week, is all the area to work on, cleaning up, dealing with some culverts, um, fixing some of the places, I'm mostly concerned with that, uh, new tar roads that are paved, the water's getting ground on the edges of, and it's cut in, it's gonna undermine it, it's just, you need to take the skid steer, and trail up, and just roll home the roads, and get.
We gave you permission to do that, at the two meetings.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting for, well, we gotta change the two culverts on, how about, and we've been working on doing some job patch, and we're gonna, uh, next thing for Monday is gonna be, put the off, put the culverts out, and, uh, water turn out, fixing some of those draw falls on the edge of the new path.
What about Mahoney Road, where the culvert's gonna?
Mahoney Road, if you start and looking where that's washing out, on that culvert.
Yeah.
It's such a narrow culvert, there's nothing to hold the dirt, but my plan was to replace that culvert for a longer one, so it could grip right around the end of it. Um, over the years, the only thing that's happened there is a grader goes by, fills it and wash out, uh, which happens, it falls in the broth. It, the culvert's too narrow.
Right.
Uh, we put a forty footer in there, I think that's six foot, but I never measured it, it would take a day to put it in all.
Well, I thought that was one of the emergency road services we approved, was to put in, to fix Mahoney Road.
Not, not to my knowledge, it's far as actually fixing yet.
To put in a new culvert and fix that area?
It's a whole, it brings some dirt into the hole, it's gonna wash out the broth. It needs to be, it needs to be fixed, but it's getting late here in the year, we're doing road work, um, that culvert needs to be replaced, that was one that I was planning on doing here in the future. If I put a forty footer in there, I can do, like, I have all these other culverts, we put them in, to grip, wrap, and get this one.
Right, can we do that, though, like, now? Because a couple weeks ago, we talked about this, getting that done, getting the edges of the road pushed back off your paving lines, and.
What we're going to do is fill the hole, and if we want to solve the problem, we can change the culvert.
Can we do that?
It's probably, it's probably gonna take two brick barrels of materials to fill the hole, which the next time it breaks, it's gonna be running corrupt, it's gonna be right back, and it does this all the time. The only way of fixing that is to put the culvert, a new culvert. You better watch, we're the one who keep putting several cushions and dirt, I mean, we can smooth it out, and, uh, maybe put something there, because you're gonna be dealing with snow flops, which hadn't put anything up there right now, that ain't gonna get knocked out of the way. The culvert needs to be replaced.
Right, we, we knew that.
But if I all of that culvert, fill the table, I'll give it, it's gonna take a week, I don't know how long it'll take.
And I don't know about it, but I mean, if you put fabric on there for now, would it help keep it from, from doing that?
Hmm, I think it'd be kinda hard, putting fabric on it easier.
It only helps if it's, it's just gonna wash.
I, I'd like to say that in your absence, we had another local.
I'd like to say that in your absence, we had another local contractor give us his time in materials sheet and is going to do that culvert on Mahoney Road, so you can take that right off your plate.
Why, you have authority to do more, right?
Just see here, you weren't here, you weren't at the meetings?
I'm aware of what we're doing, and I know what needs to be done.
And they like?
Let me, you do your job, but let me do mine. We have a problem. You two are trying completely run everything. You're stacking bricks like forever, you jumped out the end of the first block of the week and put a whole long wall in, it won't let us do anything.
So that is not true.
And then you and I stood on with the project, I budgeted fifty thousand dollars, and I told you we could probably, if we didn't have to do a lot of blasting, we would have that ready to pay in the forty thousands, between forty, that's a shit, uh, soon. Don't send that shit for him.
Kathy came back and said you were gonna do it for fifty to sixty thousand, depending on how much plastic.
They didn't tell us how much blast they were gonna blow.
Right, I'm just forgetting what Kathy said.
I budgeted fifty thousand dollars.
You didn't bid, you just gave us praise without telling us the materials, what you're gonna do.
When we got, when we worked on the budget back in June, uh, April, it was before I actually went to the hospital, I had budgeted for fifty thousand dollars of new project, and it depended upon the way they should do it. And you was all happy with that.
So that's not the case, the very first meeting in July, we knew that the budget committee and the town had voted to do some big cuts to keep this budget tight, so that people's taxes didn't go through the roof. And I did not say, let's hold Bim's money or the road commissioner money, I said, we need to make a priority list on what roads have to be fixed right away, so that we spend the money carefully, because quite a bit got taken out of that budget on every department, and since the roads have a big budget, quite a bit of that got cut. And because of that, we needed to stay within the budget. And so we asked, right at that meeting, and we can pull the notes if you want, it says, we need to know before you spend it, how it's gonna be spent, so that we don't go over budget, it can't be business as usual. Because the budget had been cut by quite a bit, I think thirty percent.
I have talked to several things that we needed to do along, I always was totally negative on everything I wanted to do.
Now, you want another?
So we got nothing done, here we have, it's first of all, over now.
Because you did not be willing.
No, it isn't me, I was, we were ready to get in, if you take a load on our driveway, we were gonna go through project.
I am making a motion that we are not discussing this anymore, do I have a second?
She just left.
Do I have a second?
No, no, this continues, I can't take it.
Do I, do I have a second?
We're all in house.
We're gonna move on to the next topic.
I need a second.
Take a second, we're gonna focus.
Make a motion, we are not discussing this. All in favor?
I don't know, I've just seen it.
All in favor? We're not discussing, that's something that was submitted for the culvert.
So is it over, Tom?
Oh!
We haven't discussed it.
Someone submitted a bid for that culvert, someone just showed up here, I don't know anything about it, Kathy, I just saw it.
So we're discussing, you're making a decision, we can talk later. To end the conversation.
To end the conversation.
To end the conversation, we're not agreeing to do anything besides end the road report.
Next.
All right, I think we've already gone to the road committee report, constable report, do we have anything from Steve?
We contacted the office of the county.
No news, okay. Code enforcement report, that is up on the table, everyone have a chance, or it get emailed to you? Several things going on, people applying for permits for plumbing and building. Okay, animal control report, ACO. I, we had not received reports from her for a couple of months, and so I contacted her and said, get on it. And we got it today, which is great, along with her mileage, which caught her up too, is that correct? Leanne, you got everything up to date, so?
Yeah, so I'll pay her the next morning, because it came in.
Yep, absolutely, yep. So with the ACO reports and brought up to date, she'll get her regular paycheck. All right. Planning board report, planning board meets on Monday, right Peggy?
Yes.
All righty, thank you for sending out the agenda. All right, ordinance committee doesn't meet until the third of the month or second of the month? Is there anyone here for ordinance? I know they already reported, I think they meet next Wednesday? Yeah. Yeah, great. Fire ward report, anything? Okay. Treasurer's report, this is all you.
I will give you the update, next report, I know the vice is still on there, I'm waiting for my recaps commitment, I will be in there. I have sixty-eight unpaid, already paying accounts, tax accounts.
Did everyone hear, Leanne? She's so self-spoken, sixty-eight?
Yeah, last day to pay twenty-three taxes is Saturday, before I leave, I have sixty-eight left.
Okay, and this is for?
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four taxes, okay? Lean to what on Saturday?
Monday.
Monday, okay. All right. And how does that stand in the past, sixty-eight right now, do we usually?
No, I'm saying maybe seventy-five.
Hi Peggy.
Leanne, you sent out an email about any enclosure for those bills, is that discussed at all? Do you have any ideas for that, for that relief?
Enclosure for those things.
You didn't send an email about we could put something in with the bills before you sent them out?
Yes, that's on the agenda.
Pardon?
It's on the agenda.
Oh, okay, so it's later than what I thought.
FEMA, we met with, this is not really treasurer's, but we can meet with FEMA, I have ten emails with information they want. They're coming tomorrow. Tomorrow, Thursday, is it Thursday at eight AM? And the next week, Wednesday at nine AM, to go around, we get information, which we already gave them.
So what is it that we gave them that's not enough information?
He keeps changing the meeting. Yeah, we have a new person handling everything, I guess we put everything into this file, and he hasn't found everything he needs. And I'm trying to get Dan to step up though, because it's not really, I'm not even zooming into the tracker.
When I sat there, we have a program for FEMA to enter data, from timesheets to coordinates, materials, it, everything is incomplete. Rains status is incomplete.
That's because Jeanne, I was scanning her the information, and she was putting it into the file. I was gonna put it all on there.
Right. The gentleman that took it over said that that was the town's responsibility, I don't believe that falls on you, maybe it does. You, we're working on that, I don't know.
Emergency management gets paid every year.
What's that?
Emergency management director is paid every year.
Dan LaRochelle. Should have put that in as well, so I don't know, I'm...
I provide invoices and numbers, I should, we need to do everything, right now, while he gets paid. Sorry, but...
Yeah? I'm gonna figure this out.
So is, is he aware of the FEMA meeting on?
He said he attended part of it, because I called in and I have the phone in the trunk on, he said he had to go, but he listened to some of it.
Will he be able to attend on Thursday?
I sent the email out to all of you, Ben, you guys, and yeah.
Okay. The guy that took it over is very thorough, and if we can get all of that data entered in those five domains that he was requesting, then...
We have two weeks for these six, and it's a lot.
Can you give Dan LaRochelle a call and see if he can make it?
Sure.
We can talk about, if he needs a meeting with us, his responsibilities as a manager, he should be involved.
You do.
Leanne's got a lot on her plate, if we can get him to do what he's supposed to be doing, that would be great.
I didn't understand that to be your job.
It's not.
No?
Exactly. So thank you for what you did do.
I'm trying, but...
Not your job.
Okay. Is there anything unique or anything new on the expense report? We made our first payment for plowing, Bim, made our first payment for plowing this week.
Yeah.
And how does that billing work? We pay him for the contract once a month?
Monthly, October through April.
October through April, the same amount every month? Yep. So that's paid this week, okay.
And we're in here for Michael Donald, hopefully he calls soon and schedules a time to commit taxes. They have audit, they're kind of a...
With the new auditor people?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you find new auditors? I've gotten the same audit.
It's a different person at the company, who sounds much more experienced.
It's still not adjusted.
Yeah, we put it out to bid, the same people, the ones who got it, yeah.
Well, I know, it cost us almost twice as much.
And we put it out to bid, and that's kind of unfortunately what happens. When the contract ends, they give us the pricing. Did, was there any other bidders? There wasn't, was there?
No.
Okay. Cemetery committee report. Hi Ken.
Hi. I've got nothing in the report, but I do have a question, it's, Hartford Center, we signed an agreement with a landowner and a logger. It was well over a year ago, and when I understood that it would be done about the four and a half. And we just finished up in Parsons, I was hoping to get in there. And it doesn't look like it's done, do you have any information as to when it might be completed? It's still brush files, there's no road down, backside, that's heat mitigated, and they still tree-stick. So the agreement was, that you would create a road?
But we had to deal with Ramsey and the logger.
Who's gonna do it?
I've spoke to Richard a couple of times. He keeps saying, yes, yes, I know, I'll get to it.
It's been over a year now.
So I'll have to get back at him, I guess, in time.
That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Solid waste committee report, is Lenny here?
Yeah. I'm Steve. We met last Wednesday. We're gonna try to educate people more on recycling, which will hopefully save some money on weekly tonnage. Right now, I think we're at, and I don't know the exact numbers, you have nineteen thousand on curtagh. Based on that, we're gonna be over budget, if it depends, obviously, July and August are, we have more waste because there's a lot more summer people here, but I'm hoping to nip this out, but we need to look at ways to save some money on weekly waste. Our bulky waste pickup was, for last year, was like, almost twenty-two thousand. We were under budget last year, but this coming year, we only budget eighteen. So, you know, if everything's the same, we're still gonna be over budget four thousand dollars. So, we're looking at ways, and as soon as we pass some suggestions, we're gonna be able to figure out anything else.
Thank you. Creation committee report, oh, yes, hi.
Just a question today, you were talking about recycling. What do you guys think about recycling? They don't recycle anything but cardboard. It's so frustrating separating anything, it's an absolute waste of time. And I don't know if I'm the only one that's noticed that, but we went the last year and a half of literally separating everything, and they throw it all in the back of the truck. So, I'm absolutely done separating it, because it's an absolute joke. They take the cardboard every three weeks at best, and everything else goes into the same empty truck. And I have cameras hanging out there, and it's a waste of time.
So, so like, the box truck they put it in, we're not paying, we're not paying tipping fees on it?
Same here?
We're not paying tipping fees on anything they take for recycling, which they put in the box truck right now.
Which box truck?
The box truck that's been going around town to pick up the recycling. They used, they used to have a recycling truck, and that broke down, which probably was on...
Accident.
What's that?
Accident, an accident.
Oh. Are you talking the brown truck?
No. It's a box truck.
They actually have, in the box truck, they have barrels, and in the barrels...
I can show you, there's two trucks that come, there's a brown truck that comes, picks up the cardboard, once every three weeks. That's it, and then the other truck takes the barrels, and we have kept them literally separated, and they take them all, throw it in the back of the truck. And I watch this every week, because I told you that they toss, throw my lids into that truck, and they don't care. Those things, including my lids, have done it in the back of the trucks. You can have it all separated, the only thing they take is cardboard, and the weeks that the cardboard itself doesn't pay, they'll take the damn cardboard and throw it in the back of the trucks anyway. So if anybody here thinks that they're separating anything, they're not. And I'll tell you what, I'll leave my camera down, I'll go, because I have cameras being right in the street, and I can film anything, they're separating nothing.
So I think what David's saying, though, is everything that they do pick up for recycling at this point, and they might be recycling down at the center, I don't know, I haven't been there.
They sort.
They, they sort there. We're not getting those tipping fees, so the more recycling we have, it's lowering our trash costs.
But that's my point, if you think they're lowering your trash costs, they're not. You're just throwing it in the same truck with the bags, and trust me, they're not down there separating the back of that truck. It is crunching everything together, it's not happening, you're dreaming anything is happening.
Well, just last Tuesday, I was here in town, and it was a recycling week, it's supposed to come every other week. And I had two separate trucks, one came to pick up my trash, and when I arrived, all my recycling was still there, then the recycling went.
It's not happening on Church Street Initiative, they're taking cardboard out of the round truck, and the other stuff is left behind, and the other truck takes all. I'll be more than happy to film it, because it's being...
No, I'd be happy to talk to Archie about it. Thanks, appreciate your input.
So, I mean, is there a chance that they're doing a different service for different groups? And the reason I ask, I live on the forty there, and almost the extreme opposite of what he's saying, is I've heard some I know, so I thought you don't let say baskets or whatever, and they left them, and the reason being is because it's not, it doesn't fit what there is. They've taken everything else out of it, but they've taken, they've put back what they can't take for, for that being for some of them. So, almost in essence, what he's saying, but opposite, so I don't, maybe they're providing a different service for different groups based on who covers it or something, I don't know.
Do we know how many trucks, is it just one truck that hits the whole town, or they have multiple trucks?
I thought it was the two trucks, but I'm not sure.
It's one garage truck, one recycling truck, the other.
I see what you're saying, and I think the National Recycling Awareness Day is gonna bring back what can be recycled. I think everybody just throws everything in that they think is recyclable, and not everything is. So that's where that educational day is gonna come in, he'll be, let's save you a headache.
That's something to do.
Right.
I think it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt down the road, too, to make recycling containers back available for folks. I see some houses have got three, and my neighbor doesn't have any, so.
Well, on the container...
Hold on, I have to go with the next one. Jason?
I think Archie's bill actually itemizes the tipage for curtagh in, in the way for recycling as well. Pretty sure it's itemized. So the more we can get that recycling number up, the more the tipping parts goes down. It's actually showing us, at least annually, how much, how much each of them are, so they're measuring it somehow.
Alan?
Well, you gotta really pay attention to the symbols on the bottom of the plastic. And so when you're seeing them throw plastic in the garbage, the symbol is, it's to tell them it's no good for recycling. They can't go into a peanut butter jar, that's plastic, it does not go into recycling. So if we can put up, I think we lost the awareness on the symbols and the numbers.
Won't hurt at all to re-educate, because we do, we get, we get into a habit, and then we...
Yeah, we have to re-educate the numbers, what they mean, and then we can go back to doing it right.
Okay. I will commit to giving Archie's a call, too, we have a, a couple of complaints have come in from town farm... We have a, a couple of complaints have come in from Town Farm Road that I investigated. It appears to be, it's not Archie's, it's dogs running and getting into trash on a regular basis on the upper part of, past your house. And so I'm gonna have the ACO try to, the dogs aren't on the leash. When I went up after trash pickup last week, they were in the trash. So I knew that it was them that was breaking it apart, so. Because the rest of the town, the rest of the road didn't have, didn't have the broken apart trash. It was just a small area. So, yes.
Where are you on the agenda?
Um, we are on Solid Waste Committee Report.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Recreation Committee Report. Yeah. Um, I know that Dana had, it was either Dana or Lenny asked us to add this in, but could we not put this in as like a, could, could the newsletter committee put this in as a recreation update for the newsletter? Versus adding it into the select board because it's all about swim lessons, yeah.
I think you need to keep aware of when the deadlines are. I thought the newsletter deadline was in September.
We just, I think this came from Lenny. Lenny got this and asked to add it into the select board letter. But it's all about swim lessons. But it's all about swim lessons, which to me should be probably as part of the Rec Committee. Okay. All right. Calendar reminders coming up. The Ordinance Committee meets on October 9th at 6:00 PM. The Town Office is closed for Indigenous People. Columbus Day on October, Monday, October 14th. Um, unfinished business, MMA Voting Delegates, 10/14. Excuse me, uh, Voting Delegate's credential form.
Is anyone going to the convention?
I don't think so.
I don't really.
Well, we can skip this then because they're not gonna get it in town.
Yeah.
I'm in Augusta for a training on Thursday morning. We needed to bring it up, I could do that. I'm gonna be right near the Civic Center.
When did you say?
Thursday morning.
This is Wednesday, October 2nd.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on. Town Informational Correspondence.
So I'm gonna send a letter to the tax bills, an informational letter. I need to know what you guys want to put in it, if anything.
Yep. I'd love to be able to put a couple of those things in about some of the good works of the Cemetery Committee, the gentleman who's, we have, has cemeteries for people that don't have them, which I thought was pretty cool. Also love to see a summary, if we had it, of 23, 24, like building permits, things that taxpayers might be interested in knowing what's going on in Hartford that they might not see. Like, is this how many building permits? Is this how many? New houses, something of that nature that talks about what's going on on our town.
I sent an email to all the officials, including Scott.
Oh, good, I'll ask him. Peggy, you were first.
I had two suggestions, just because you just discussed them. Also a reminder that they should be looking at things on the Town website. I don't know how many people actually use it. And third, if we're going to do the comprehensive plan, you might mention something about that so people can start thinking about it who may not know that this is going on.
Great ideas.
That's what I was gonna say, I said.
She just pulled that right out.
It's coming, it's coming right out.
Yep. Great.
So do you want to put it on the agenda again? Because like if you, you have to decide what comes from the board.
Do we want a list? Is that what you want and approved by the board or?
It's up to you, up to you, please. Do you want to send a little letter or whatever you want? I just need to know.
You're very good at getting that copy, though.
What's that? I think a couple of hometown heroes, that stuff, that statistics from Scott about what buildings we've, what the activity's been over the last year. Recycling's a great idea and, and putting out next year's date, do we have that already for bulky waste of some sort?
Um, I do, but I don't know what's gonna happen. I don't dare advertise yet.
Okay. I'm just thinking that if people knew about when we're gonna do it, they could prepare and.
Are we gonna have curcide for these?
We don't know yet, do we? But what I mean is we can.
We're not gonna have curcide for tiny wastes so that they wouldn't miss them, right?
I'm just thinking the recycling information.
Yeah, I do have that.
Like Auburn Recycling, these places where they can bring stuff besides here or Archie's.
Pretty much, yeah. By the time this goes out, but. Oh, Archie's, yes.
Yeah.
But not hazardous, okay?
I didn't mean hazardous, I meant like if somebody has a, a metal bed frame, they could bring that to Auburn or they could bring that to Archie's or they could bring that to West Paris Land Recycling. Just so they don't sit on it. They could get rid of it now and not let the snow pile on it.
What is this you're talking about?
So every year, we send out the tax bills and we send out, we wanna send out informational, town information with the tax bills.
Are these to everybody?
Yeah.
I used to do it all the time, but I haven't started back up.
Oh, I thought this was specifically for 68 people in Florida.
No, this is for the tax bills that are going out the end of the month.
I was gonna say, why not just send a gift card to a restaurant while you're here?
It's going out with a tax bill, so it's the same cost to send it out as the bill. We have this wonderful thought that maybe people would wanna get more involved and so we're gonna give them information and arm them with good stuff. Okay, Community Action Grants, thank you for including those. Leanne?
I sent an email to Ashley to see what we had to do to reapply. We're not due for re-enrollment for this grant thing here. We just have to upgrade some information, answer where we made progress, what areas are priorities to address next. So it sounds like we might have to have a little public hearing.
Yep, like we did with all the sign boards that chose what our community needs or.
I know this college that's willing to help if we apply.
Oh, nice.
Just like the other group did.
Yeah, that was great, those are good people. And we still are active and still have access to the folks that we were using before.
I emailed them and I never got an answer. Claire.
Yeah, Claire.
So that's why I was thinking about this. So like for $75,000 or regional truck, it can be $125,000 to $175,000.
That's with multiple communities involved.
Yeah, I know, I can listen to that.
Yeah. Yep.
Just mention what the grants are for.
This is the, this is how we got our solar panels and our heat pumps paid for. And we're still a part of that, that Community Action group through resilience. And we do need to update our records, but they're offering some more grants. Most of it is energy efficiency. So you get 75,000, up to $75,000 to do energy efficiency type things or helping continue our town, with our town buildings to what?
What if you had one?
We were thinking new, new doors or windows, things that would help keep the heat in and the cold out. Yes, Peggy?
When I was at the Town Office one day, you mentioned something about the doorways for election. Are we still a problem with that, having the doorway size large enough? We are, so that might be something to consider.
Right, that's why we're thinking the front doors. Because then if we could get.
And the balance.
Yeah. So if we're gonna make changes, we'd like to get it all done at the same time if we can.
Going for an accessible door, does it make sense to widen the front door or do you need to widen the door for if there's a ramp?
Well, first we need to see if we're gonna qualify. I have to call because we sat in on this grant process and I asked that question and they said we'd like you to call us directly. So, to show why, because it's not so much handicap accessibility, even though it is for us. But the whole front entry is pretty loosey-goosey and not very energy efficient. And as Lee knows, you close that door too. Thank goodness, but still. But if, if we could combine the, get money to combine it into better access for those that have a wheelchair, walker or these assistance.
Is that from the Land Help Fund?
We haven't gotten that.
We haven't gotten that far yet.
I was about to say.
But they asked me to call them, which I do. We just sat in on that, so.
So it sounds like we should host another community workshop. We get in for it and then we could get sued because the deadline's coming up.
Yeah, so let's set a date for a community workshop. You'll call Claire?
If you'd like.
I know you've already tried, she didn't email you back. They're still in Norway, I don't think they moved out of Norway, did they?
They're still.
Yeah, okay. So I'll contact Claire and work, and can we set a tentative date or two so that I can get Claire to commit to one of them and have their group do it or?
And if we're clean, or if you call her first and then.
That'd be good. But if we don't meet and talk about this for two weeks, that's two weeks.
I thought you need one week.
One week is rude, isn't it?
Yeah. So if you look at your calendars, girls.
We could probably do it without her because we've been through it once.
Oh, good. What about the, let's see, it's close on the 14th. What about October 16th or 17th? It's a Wednesday or Thursday. You can't do Wednesdays. 15th, we already have a meeting.
And we've been delaying December 17th. We know a little bit.
December 17th, so we can push it back to the. What do we look at? The 22nd? Maybe at 7:30, we can go through our.
Oh, which one?
October.
It's the second meeting.
That's a roads meeting, right?
Okay, so after that?
Yeah. Okay, and I'll call Claire and hopefully get her to come next, we can get it advertised. Yep. Okay. All right, new business. General Assistance Ordinance Amendments. At 6:15 tonight, we did our public session for this year's 2024 General Assistance Maximum References and their amendments. And we had a little bit of public discussion. Thank you, everybody. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the state's 24, 25 new rates and changes. All, all in favor?
Okay, so adopting a new version of the ordinance or removing the body of the program or do you wanna adopt the entire new ordinance of access? I think it applies to the same.
Yeah. I'm, I'm willing to accept the whole thing, yeah. They've been a huge, huge help the last few months. It's got to be right here, so let me see it. Hi, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is recycling event on November 16th, 2024, new business. What is, is the celebration of National Recycling Day? Who? Sponsored by the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee. When? November 16th, night to noon, Hartford Town Hall, pending approval, which is why we're talking about it. Why? To give information to the public on how to save money through recycling, composting and using the apparel impact bins. That's the bin next to that. Kathleen wants to know how often they come and collect that bin, do you know?
Once a week.
Once a week. Oh, I gotta go and kill that thing.
Peggy?
I just wanna tell you a little bit of interesting information about that. When I was in the town, I was with my kids, there were storefronts where you walk in and there was piles and piles of clothes from US. That's what some of the clothes go to.
That's awesome.
Not necessarily from that particular.
But when you saw the teachers say Harvard and stuff like that, you had them here.
Well, yeah, but it didn't necessarily come from that whole fridge.
No, but, sorry, but it came from US. Very nice. Thank you for sharing that, because we would have never thought. All right. Yep, you can, go ahead.
I'm gonna make a motion to allow the hall to be used for that event on Saturday, 16th, for recycling awareness. Anyone want to second?
I'll second then. All in favor? Excellent. Good, good, good.
So is that like a training?
Um, it's like an awareness day to let people know where they can recycle things. I don't know, the Solid Waste Committee will be hosting it. Yeah. I know Tina Burlock, I don't know if it's her family or, she works there, but down at the end of Parlow Hill Road where Porter Tire is, they have quite a secondhand shop there with lots of kids' stuff and clothing for all ages and shoes. And they have their own bins outside too, so lots of opportunities to reuse, recycle. Great. All right, next, comprehensive plan. So we need to set up a. So we need to set up a monthly schedule for a meeting and get our committees situated. And we had a great meeting last week and with Erica from AFCO and thanks to those that were able to attend. So our ordinance says that the heads of our committees, with Peggy being head of planning board. Peggy, you want to be on the committee, of course, right?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, it also has, is that our code enforcement Scott? Is that true? Yeah, thank you. Okay. Okay, so Board of Slumming, of course. Town Clerk, Road Commissioner, BIM. The Chair of the Planning Board, the Chair of the Appeals Board, who is, who is the Chair of the Appeals Board?
Probably Leslie, I'm not sure.
Chairs of the standing committees created by, let's see, wait a second, did I skip one? Chair of the Appeals Board, Chairs of those standing committees created by Town Ordinance. So Ordinance Committee, which is Daryl. Budget Committee, which is Dave. Cemetery Committee, where's Ken? Road Planning Committee, that you, Al.
Sure.
Or someone from your committee for the comprehensive plan.
That's gonna be all one day, we're gonna do this?
Oh, no, we're gonna do it over several months. Once a month, I think, is what they're suggesting.
It's like years.
I'm not, can I speak to that a little bit? You know that the ideal community size is nine to 11, seven to 11. And the ordinance you're referring to is the, for the review committee, which if you read the full description of the ordinance, it's for deciding upon updates, it's not actually take on the project of updating the whole plan. So I think you're at liberty to change it a little bit, strictly since the usual descriptions of who should be on a comprehensive plan, like the stuff that Erica had to provide, is that you allow a variety of people from various backgrounds in the town.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just saying, you can, you can.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
So let's see, Cemetery Road Planning Committee, or designate. Someone from the original committee from back in 2008, if that's not already, Peggy, you weren't on the committee in 2008, were you?
No, but I brought my man in 2007. I went to someone who was.
Yeah, that's what I remember was the content.
Cool.
Judy, Judy Hamilton was.
Judy Hamilton was. So it's suggesting that we get someone from the original committee. And then Chairs of the Board of Committee, they can designate a replacement. So what I'd like to do is have all the committees meet this month, decide if they want to send someone or whether they want us to take it away and we'll find somebody else.
You know, there actually was a meeting called a meeting of all the committees at one point, I think, I don't know.
How long ago was that?
Way back then.
Way back then. So we could communicate to all the committees via email, if you want me to create that or you can, and just ask them all, this is who would, has in the past served and at this month's meeting, would you please discuss it and see if your chair or designate from the committee or if the committee says no thanks? One second, go ahead.
Kathleen Terrio. So the whole community, though, can go to these meetings, obviously, and be able to put some input, but mostly it will be the committee making decisions, is that?
No, I think it can be.
All over to the.
One more discussion.
Obviously. I can discuss with you a little more the process. So there's a lot of like work, work that has to be done, gather stuff and put things together. But our town was exemplary in 2008. We were commended by the state because we had so many open meetings about it, what now we call, not the regular meetings of the committee, but the hearings, hearings. And they did it under most, each category, so yes, there'll be community participation. And also, that would say somebody who's on the fire committee, which would be Leanne or somebody else in the community. From my research, nobody's on the fire committee otherwise is in town, or alive or something like that.
Right, 2008, holy moly. Yes, Kathleen?
How does that work when you do those? Isn't it the public, did you say the public hearings, every time there's a public hearing, it's an extra couple hundred dollars to advertise or something? Is that? And it wasn't public hearings?
Depends on how big the article on the newspapers, but.
So every time you have it, so did you have these committee meetings, are they considered public hearings or?
No, they're like work group meetings.
Workshops, so we can get by with the comprehensive publicly, put it in the paper.
I think once they, correct me if I'm wrong, Peggy, but I think once they pull some ideas together, then they go, hey, let's get everybody together and see if we're on the track that the town feels.
Right, yes, that's correct. Well, we had so many in 2008. Public hearing history requirement, we probably won't go on that.
Right, yeah. But in the past, we've had more than one public hearings, correct Peggy, that's what you said? We were commended for having several public hearings and letting people participate. Well, let's.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Is it all three or thirteen? Eight public hearings for the public.
Sorry.
Eight public hearings or workshops?
No, eight public hearings on.
And then we did nothing afterwards.
On the cereal health association at the recreation, one on national resources and lakes, one on land duties, one on agriculture forestry, one on. So that was my question, did you pay $200 every time they had those hearings?
I think I would have that, we could call workshops, maybe.
That's a good idea.
Al?
So did you guys get this all together, you're gonna come up with a monthly time we're gonna do this meeting?
Yes. AFCO suggested that we meet monthly. And it would be like over, like a whole year, it would be something, just one meeting gets done.
Would it be every month or every two months?
AFCO suggested a month because they don't want to lose focus, but they don't want to be too far apart from each one. Yes, Peggy?
And there's a whole list of, not requirements, but suggestions, that people who want to actively be on the committee, follow those suggestions, like, you know, the commit for several year project, at least once a month, do active research. And there was a couple more things that I wanted to add, that they had email and internet accessibility, because we're in the information age, we're gonna be dealing with a lot of information back and forth.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is all for the comprehensive plan?
Correct. For where it's a town going. Hopefully, we'll make a plan and it'll be something people want to follow up with and we can implement, that's the whole point. Because put in all that time and effort, then not move forward, hopefully can move forward. Everyone's lives are busy.
My favorite thing to do is not move forward.
Yes.
You guys ever consider putting together a Facebook meeting? Since there's so much going on back and forth, talking about what's going on in this town? Let me say this, there's at least two people here in this room tonight that had an awful lot to say about tonight's meeting, but I think we really should do it.
To put what?
A Facebook meeting, I'm being a smart ass.
Oh, all right.
But there's at least two people in this room that literally called out the meeting before it happened. And the drama that goes on there daily is hysterical. It's why it's the first time I've come down here in a long time, because I'm dying to see if what they say on Facebook will actually say here personally. I really don't think they will, but I've sat here very quietly waiting. But the drama that goes on and the trash talking is so out of control, it's disgusting. It's absolutely disgusting. It really is.
We know. Don't look at it.
Oh, I know you know, and the person that I'm trying to help that I talked to you guys about early, I'm not gonna mention his name, this man absolutely needs help desperately in more ways than you could tell him. His wife had a stroke last year, his whole deck collapsed, which folded up a wheelchair ramp. I'm waiting to get him out. My illness is tanking, you can tell that being poor weight, you could tell him, and I saw my contractor, my son, he went over there rebuilding his whole deck of wheelchair ramp, because that's what people should be doing, to be honest, instead. I got Lowe's covering the wood and that's just a scratch on the surface of what this man needs. That's what people should be doing in this town, instead of sitting on Facebook and trashing everything.
A lot of them are, there's so much volunteering and are certainly.
Oh, listen, I know Ken, I talked to him a lot of times, and Ken's, all year long, my son started building the Facebook forum up last year, you know, and trying to get people to help him. And again, it's sad, but the shit that goes on on Facebook, guys, grow up, literally grow up. You know, it's disgusting. The people just won't, and when I read, I laugh, and it's so pathetic. Grow up and help your neighbors, grow up and help other people, get off Facebook, get a life, absolutely get a life, try to help somebody.
Thank you for that, Mike.
Thank you. Okay. So appointments and resignations, Road Committee.
Guys, we have one gentleman that had come to the meeting, reached the meeting, so do you want to just replace him? I want you guys to, if you want to remain, you can hold him off.
Accept resignation. Okay, there's a gentleman here on the Road Committee that hasn't attended and that is assumed to be a nonverbal resignation, so I'll make a motion to accept that resignation on behalf of the Road Committee. Is there a second?
One second. Oh, discussion.
Who is it?
Ryan Road Johnson.
Al, who is it, Ryan Road Johnson, he was on the half-burned farm?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Why not, why don't we do it? We gotta come to the meeting.
Okay, do we have anybody that is interested in serving? What does it say, what does it say that, what's over here? Okay. Oh, is there anybody else? No? Paul Bermansters is here somewhere? Hi, Paul, it says that you're interested in serving on the Road Committee and you currently are involved with road work and, is that true? You've had some great conversations in our meetings. Would you be willing to serve on the Road Committee?
Absolutely.
Okay, you will start as an alternate, that's the position? Okay, I make a motion that we accept Paul Bermansters, that I make a nomination for him to be on the Road Committee as the alternate. All in favor? Okay, Paul, before you go, would you, what we wanted to do before you go is fill out this form. While you're right here. Okay. Budget Committee resignation, do we know who that is?
That's the one I just read? Budget? Oh, Budget?
Oh, there it is. So I would like to make a motion.
That's related office, right?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to accept Mike McCann's resignation from the Budget Committee with regret.
One second, that.
All in favor? Okay, so what does the bylaws say? That's an elected position at town meeting, does the select board appoint or do we?
Three remaining of the.
Do we have anybody that is interested in serving? Paul, that sucker won every minute. No, that's wrong old. And Paul, you did say you wanted to serve on the Budget Committee, it's not along, not along a commitment, Dave, what, Budget Committee? Paul Bermansters filled out a form about interested in joining the Budget Committee, we have to appoint someone? Right now, oh, I'm asking about the commitment.
He's on the Ordinance Committee, he's on the Road Committee now.
Do you know who's on it?
Yeah.
Right. I know Jen Bonventure has also approached me about possibly being on the Budget Committee. Jen Bonventure, she's from Bonventure Farm up on Berry Road. I don't know if Chad is here or Jen, I don't think either one of them are here. Hi, Chad. She wants to talk to Dave first. Do you want to leave? What'd you say, Kathy?
I asked the, what she said.
Well, I just, I thought she was being a little bit ingenious in the kitchen scene.
So Paul would assume the role to fill Mike McCarron's, McCarron's, and Jen at this point would be an alternate.
What's that?
Can you put the same guy on both, both reservations?
Was there anybody else in the book? How could I just throw at people for that form as first?
I guess that I had talked to, what, Jen, she hasn't come in, I know she was gonna reach out to Dave.
And there's plenty of time for Budget Committee to, you know.
Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we put it off till next meeting?
Well, that way Jen wanted to talk to Dave before she went to the, don't you have the opportunity?
Yeah. Plus, we don't want Paul to get so overwhelmed that he decides three committees is too much.
People do have a preference, though, which committee they want to deal, that's the other option.
Did we, Jen, we have experience in roads?
Yes.
Awesome. All right, well, let's, let's table that till our next meeting, can we put that on the next agenda? And this is Paul for Road Committee.
So yes, I have all these meetings, meetings to think about.
We do? Who, who from the ordinance?
Yeah.
We already filled that.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, last meeting. All right, so Paul, you'll need to fill this out and, should I put that back to Leanne? Great. Yeah, she's on both now, she's at alternate ordinance. All right.
Kathleen, did you fill out your paperwork for ordinance?
Yeah, I did.
Awesome. We already did. Okay, broadband ad hoc committee. All right, so right now, we have interested residents of Tim Kurwin, Millard Rose, and David Courtney.
Millard's here, right?
Yeah. I thought that community was. Is that still going forward?
So even though there's some steps we have to take with companies that are FCC, line people to look at doing some joint funding, we certainly want to create an ad hoc committee that can start making regular calls to First Light and Spectrum and Kathy, Mo's sister, was a huge thorn in First Light's side and surprisingly enough, she got lined for internet just a month ago? Yeah. Oh, we're not gonna let you, we're so happy to have you on the committee.
I'd like to pair you up with Kathleen Terrio in the front, she's already been making phone calls, so that would be great. She can, she can fill you, fill you in on where they've been and where their, what other doors they need to go.
Nothing, Leanne says it. Nothing, Leanne says it. Within some folders that we have, we know exactly who's got internet or pretty close and who doesn't. And it would be great if we could come up with some sort of map. You know, like we might have had during the comprehensive plan. There is one.
I did, didn't I send you all that email? Okay, so when I was actually started reading what was required for that application.
Right, yeah.
I remember the telling at one point that they talked to First Light. So I went on First Light's website. And there's a map right on their website that shows that they have already connected to high-speed two-thirds of Hartford. There's one-third, see, they already did this in a prior granting thing. This one now is not gonna include Hartford, because Hartford is already planned out via First Light. And they're, they said it's gonna be within the next five years that they will finish the one-third of Hartford. And I actually saw them stringing on my street, like, within the last year or so. And I went on their website and found out if you want high-speed internet, all you have to do is pay more. It goes up for how much you're gonna get first speed.
Right.
So, so there's still need for more than above that, you mean like an alternative provider?
What I'm saying is, like, quite a bit of Bear Pond doesn't have any high-speed internet.
Well, then you gotta talk First Light, 'cause they have the contract.
That's what we were just talking about, is that making phone calls to First Light and trying to get them to move faster than five years. Because just a couple of years ago, it was only gonna be a couple of years, and now it's five years.
Well, that's just, I said on their website, which is...
Yes, Kathleen.
I spoke to Mia herself yesterday about that.
Yeah, she spoke to Mia over at the Community Concepts, yeah.
She said that First Light had an award coming to them, it wasn't great. She said it an award, she said they're just waiting on a contract that needs to be signed. She said what we need, though, is we need the addresses of the people that need it. And we need to act, because she's like, you have the list of addresses? And I'm like, no. And Spectrum said the same thing, I need a list of addresses and do... Spectrum said do a petition.
Right, that want internet, because even though so many...
Right.
Might live on the road, may say, might want internet. Peggy?
So, they were stringing it on my road, so I was wanting to think that if I just called them and paid forty dollars or sixty dollars more a month, I could get, you could buy the higher tiers. Because the line's all there, I guess the only final connection become a road to your house, I guess. And I didn't see if there was any, so installation speed to buy the higher tier. Because I checked my, when I first was doing something for comprehensive, I checked my speed test, and I had the lowest level. And I said, well, we couldn't afford me to own here. But, you know.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that First Light was already offering all these different tiers and that the wiring was going in and out.
Right. Well, I know there's a long part of Main Street that has no... I mean, it stops like right at that Scottson, the house.
And we had it at the town offices for twenty years.
Right, but I know that there's people, I think Ken Bylund's one of them.
I am one on Main Street of Hartford that does not have fiber optics, does not have high-speed internet. I have had a slow speed in it. On Main Street.
That was part of the area that's not done.
Just that, yeah, that doesn't mean that you can't have high-speed, you can have fiber optics. I've been trying for...
Moral, yes.
Did I hear you correctly when you said that Bear Pond doesn't have...
No, I said there are parts of Bear Pond that doesn't have any wiring for high-speed.
There's partially not covered.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I have neighbors that... No, I don't have it.
You don't have fiber, by God, you don't.
Not to my house, I think it goes... I think it goes down to Larry Campell's house, but I don't think it goes past that.
But that's a purpose of the committee, right?
And there's so many folks down near me that are just seasonal, so...
Up on St. Samuel, we have internet, but we don't have broadband.
So it's not high-speed?
And Polly is quite anxious to get broadband.
I bet.
And she says that they've been promising every three years they're gonna do it, and then every three years it goes bye, and then it's gonna be a lot...
Now it's bye. That's what they have on the website. So, that's why we're advocating to make calls and...
No, for me, internet is ten times faster than I can even think about. But, so I don't share nothing about broadband with Polly.
Okay. All right. So, what's next?
Are you appointing a committee or not?
Yeah, I still would like to have an ad hoc committee to be advocates for our town. That, that would be great. That way, we get somebody on the pulse all the time. So I'd like to make a motion, we have an ad hoc committee, do you have names for the people, we already have others, too?
Kathleen Terrio, Jeremy Smith, Jane Quint, David Courtney, Millard Rose, and Tim Kurwin.
So, is that a second?
I'll do a second that.
All in favor? Great.
Can you say it more once?
Kathleen Terrio, Jane Quint, Jeremy Smith, and the three on my list. That's it?
Okay.
Dan, can I say this?
Yeah.
Who did you appoint to ordinance, because it's not in minutes?
It's not?
I thought I was losing my mind.
Oh, I thought we already did, Kathleen Terrio had already filled out... Oh, you just filled out the form and said you wanted to do it?
I didn't think we were appointing her. So I was with you.
Maybe you don't know.
No, I... I was with you.
You did say on your volunteer form that you were willing to serve. So, I'd like to nominate you based on your volunteer form to be, it's an alternate position, I believe?
No.
No, did we move someone up?
You accepted a resignation, I respect.
Yes. So, I think we need to move whoever the alternate is, which I think is Jane.
Needs resignation.
Jane?
We already accepted resignation, because he wasn't here.
Who?
Are you talking about from ordinance?
Yeah.
We already accepted resignation in the last meeting.
Well, you move the others.
You have an alternate, I think it's Jane Quint.
Need her resignation. Need her resignation.
Oh, prompting an alternate. I forgot.
She has to resign from actually...
Okay.
She doesn't automatically slide.
Right. All right. All right. So, do you want to, do we have a way to contact her? She must be in that book somewhere. So if we can ask her to resign to be, to be reappointed?
Can't ask so much, please.
Please resign. Trick ya! You know Jane well, I don't know Jane. Okay. It's great, great, we have new people.
She was here at a meeting a few weeks, a month ago.
So, we can't appoint, we can't appoint anyone till Jane resigns.
That's up to you, there's an open slot, a regular member.
Yeah, well, I'm pretty sure that...
Why do you want her to resign so much?
What's that?
Why do you want her to resign?
To move up.
To move up, she's an alternate. And Leanne says she has to resign, her alternate. I just think if you have an alternate on the committee, they should have first, if they'd like to move up, to a regular member. We can't. We're stuck.
So that's on the agenda for next week?
I don't want to tick off anyone for not giving her a chance to move up, if she wants. Okay. MMA Labor and Employment Workshop, which is coming up next week, are you going to that? Is it in August, I can't really zoom in, oh, zoom. How are we doing on our budget for training?
We're open. You budgeted five hundred? I don't know if I dated the last two yet. I think I did. It's like six, something like that.
No. We'll try to attend this one next time they offer it, maybe in the next budget year. I'd be conscientious, of course. Okay, review correspondence, do we have any correspondence, Leanne? I'll move fast. All right, agenda items for next meeting?
So, Kathleen has that bottom to be asking, Grant? No, we already sent her...
And what?
We already sent her the workshop, I guess.
Yeah, well, if she can do it that night. Like you said, we don't know what she's doing, but, yeah.
Do you have anything that you want on the next agenda?
Besides the regular stuff, I think we're good. Okay. So we're gonna do the Community Action Grant on the next agenda, I'll talk to Claire. Hopefully, she can do the twenty seconds, so... Excellent. This is for our ad hoc committee. And Millard and Kathleen, this is for our ad hoc committee, so if we could have you sign this and just cut your hand, put a spot on here, we're all good.
Be up to you guys instead of meeting date, I guess. Yeah.
Great. So Kathleen and... We'll have you sign themselves while you're here. All righty. Thank you so much for agreeing to serve. All righty, we're gonna move into open session, does anyone have anything that they would like to share for open session? Hey, go ahead.
I just wanted to know where we're at with the contract from last week, has that been signed?
We have received a contract that has not been signed yet. It just arrived today.
Okay, is there any issue with signing it, or are we waiting for anything from the contract?
No. No, we got his liability already has our name on it, and, and... Do you have it?
The contract?
Yeah. How you feel, dear? So this is the contract from Kitchell. And he's already sent her his liability insurance with Hartford, didn't he?
Um, Federal Works Hall, does he have that on his...
He is emailing it to us. And he's got a couple of subs that have independent contractors.
So you didn't require that with BIM?
We didn't require it with BIM.
You didn't require all the checks?
We required liability insurance of...
Right.
Yeah. But he's already told us he's got it, and he's emailing it to us, so...
So my other question is, sixty-one thousand, where's the money coming from to get that road ready for pavement?
From the road's budget.
And what's, that's your budget?
No, it's current budget.
So you're gonna have that all done for the budget here, paving and all?
No, no, the sixty-one thousand is to get the road ready for paving, paving will happen next year. We've already set aside a hundred thousand dollars of paving from last year's budget for this road. For paving.
All right, so this is what you're putting up, so that's your budget amount, I'm asking.
No, the hundred thousand is for paving. This is for roadwork.
Where did you say that on the line?
In the money we set aside last year, at the end of... No, I know. Because he's not paving it. The paving money that we set aside was in, at the end of last year, right, for this year's budget?
If other roads were special, we would have paved, why not?
But we set a hundred thousand dollars aside. For paving. Right, and we're not paving. And the money that we set aside, the hundred thousand dollars, for the general fund.
In last year's budget?
No, this year's budget, we did it, this past spring, we took it out of the general fund and set aside for paving. Yeah. Right. So, but that's only for paving.
So a hundred thousand dollars just for paving?
Just for paving.
So last night, so you got fifty thousand dollars in budget this year for getting the road and you just awarded sixty-one thousand dollars contracts, very old budget.
Correct.
So... We just spent longer time on the broadband internet than we did last week with this contract. You guys have no research on the contract, did? You didn't give a guy that's been doing it for forty years a chance to provide us insurance, even though I understand you didn't provide it with BIM, you shouldn't. But you also asked on BIM spec, on fire, because that's what materials you can use, and tips you not provide that. So if you're gonna mitigate about one thing, you shouldn't have picked up that too. And there's BIM right here, no one is, it says you use any gravel, any crushed stone, or nothing else. But I didn't want to break that.
Well, we've already made a decision, unfortunately.
It was a rash decision, I guess.
No, it was not a rash decision, we've been waiting to get Pratt Hill Road done. We asked for specifics on how much it was gonna cost, we already knew that the state of Maine was looking at, the DEP was looking at all the gravel that washed down the road and into the pond. It's a priority road, we did not wanna wait, we'd asked for details and couldn't get them. We asked for a estimate. And all we could get was Kathy to come back and tell us, because BIM was not either able or wanting to come to meetings and discuss it. We even had people from the Road Committee go to BIM's house with, hey, can we just get some details? And here's what we're looking for, and they refused to do it. At what point do we have to...
They said about erosion, but here it is October. It's not gonna finish, but we'll build a foundation. What's gonna stop the concrete road in spring?
Hopefully, the higher grade materials and the brick rack he's getting.
I think what he's talking about, I think what he means is, oh, when this all started, rasping like an invoice of how many loads of gravel is it gonna take?
We asked for specifics.
Right, was that in the...
Yeah. No, it wasn't.
It's in the specs.
He's even bringing his own gravel, and we have free gravel, he was here when you mentioned what he was gonna do. And let me say something about that road, that road was already budgeted four years ago, it's been done.
Four years? Show me where it says, did you grab it, did that's... No. All he has is material later. um, all he has is material and labor. Well, it is. But BIM says it's in the materials, so if you guys wanted to specify it.
The spec sheet told us exactly how many, between a certain amount of gravel on the spec sheet that the BIM committee, which Kathy was on, put in that spec sheet.
In your spec, you wanted it, and I'll read it. Estimation of all the material we used. Then we didn't even play the rap, I mean.
His bid was the only one that had, like, ninety-nine percent of what we asked for to arrive. It had details, when to start, when to stop, what he was, who he was buying the stuff from, he's got an agreement with
So now because you wanna gravel, you're gonna put, you're gonna provide it for your own bid. I mean, that's
We took the bids we had, we made the best decision of what we had right then.
You just jumped, you, the meeting was adjourned before you even thought about it?
There was, there was no jumping. We've been at this since I stepped in, months.
So you knew, you knew what the bid was before I came in?
No, no.
Okay, now what do you mean, you're racking months?
We've been trying to get
What I'm saying is,
You're saying we're being
Your decision was rash, you need to think about it.
How can you say that, from June, when I have all of the road committee notes, I have all of the road commissioner notes saying, I'm gonna get this done, I'm gonna get this done, I'm gonna get this done, and here we are. We, the roadwork needs to be done, so we waited and waited and waited and waited, and nothing was being done. Rumor around the town is that rather than the roads were being done, our road commissioner and his contractor were up hanging instead of paying attention to the roads. So, they kind of, they kind of forced our hand.
I've been on BIM, you know, since I was a kid. And we were thinking, you know, I'm working on, what's the problem? Well, you people didn't want to accept why I have to do this. You can put all the blame that you want on me. I made you an estimate between forty and fifty, we budgeted fifty. If you want to send double or triple that
It's red, fifty thousand dollars, right there, six hundred thousand dollars. He budgeted the fifty, not lying about that, three year black and white, so don't tell me he didn't.
So that budget last year was changed at the end when the town voted to cut the budget. Just hold on, give me a chance, and then you're welcome to have a chance after Lee talks. Okay, because she's next, and then he's next. So, the road, the town voted to cut the budget. We then started having meetings in July, and I was worried that our budget was gonna be cut pretty drastically, and where is that money gonna come from? We just can't spend without a plan. Unfortunately, every time we asked for a plan, our road commissioner wasn't available, that was the time, and so, and I know, he was getting back from the hospital and recovering. So Kathy was our liaison. And Kathy came in here and first said between forty and fifty, then she came back and said, well, I talked to BIM again, and now we're talking, we're gonna have to do some blasting, and if we have to blast it, it could be as high as sixty, but BIM is saying fifty to sixty. But we, we asked for other information and didn't get it. And we also were concerned, because we wanted to know what, what he was gonna use for product, because it's very sensitive down there on Pratt Hill. It's so close to the watershed, and these people have been waiting a super long time to get their road fixed. A super long time. So we were trying to move it forward. The road committee met and invited people to come down and talk about the road, get involved through the vote. Jeremy came down at the time, and when they were walking through the road and decided what needed to get done. I know that a couple of our people on the road committee had other folks come down and look at the road and give ideas, and that's how they based the bid. And that's what I know. We sent the bid out, we had multiple people put bids in, and we took what we thought was the fairest offer, and that they could do it this year, because these people deserve to have something done to that road that will last, and will protect the road for the winter. Even last winter, I got a text message from Tina Burnlock on there going, I don't understand why they're plowing our road with a little one ton, and they could just, people are getting stuck and can't get through. When are we gonna get this road done? So, we need to get this done. We can't be having that road be put off again. So we made a decision to move forward, and we did. And we hope, at the time when we thought it was fifty to sixty thousand, sixty-one seemed pretty reasonable, especially against the hundred-plus thousand other couple of bids we had.
Are you willing to be blasted and wedged up? It needs to be taken out of the road. Are you turning over the road if it all drops out? That, that BIM spec you have is so vague that it isn't even covering the issues that need to be done.
Well, that's interesting.
There's one section of that road that needs to be dug up. The gravel could be, it's a tough spot. That's what I'm gonna keep talking about. I gave you an awful estimate of what it would cost us to go there, and work on that road, just like we have every other road in town. You know what I call the work is? It depends, the estimate was fifty thousand, the budget was fifty. We were hoping to commit closer to forty. If we had to spend three days or two days down there blasting, the guy gets five thousand dollars a day to wash it. It needs to be taken out. You're jumping right over it, not even gonna do it. So far.
We're not tearing up the road this year.
It's too late to tear the road up, yes, and that's a beautiful level. But do you realize that they bought and saved and scraped roads off in October before?
And that's my point, I'm tearing the road up this year.
It's absolutely crazy, it's crazy, you can't always do that. They take the cable off that.
We had three
We gotta stop this meeting, that's it.
We had three BIM committee people, and unfortunately, our road commissioner didn't want me a part of that BIM committee. Richard, yes. I'm sorry, reads for us from that Richard. Yes, wait, go ahead.
Is, I seen this lovely little contract, and in fact, all the service materials, it doesn't say what kind of material, but, but what I wanna know is, when you have paid out this money and had this work done, presumably to get done this fall, is the road gonna be ready for paving at that time?
No.
No? Well, then if the road's not ready for paving, when is it gonna be ready for paving?
Next year.
And what's gonna, oh, only boys from India. And, and so, at what point is the rest of the work gonna be done?
Another bid.
Another bid, and then in the spring. How much do you think it is gonna cost to actually get the road ready for paving?
Do you know, as I'm listening to you, I'm hearing a meeting two, three sessions ago where, over the past four or five years, there was a hundred and fifty thousand budgeted for Pratt, and how much got spent in four or five years? Two thousand five hundred. You, the town has left us know that those that wanted to help or could have helped chose not to, and now that we've made a decision to go ahead and move the work forward, we're getting, we're getting this. Where were you three months ago when we were asking for help? Where were you when we were taking a tour down, looking for BIM specs and input? Where were you then?
I don't weigh BIM specs.
Then
Neither do you. That's, that's our point.
The problem is, is the road, it's BIM specs, we have a three-person road committee, BIM spec team, and it consists of our one select board member, head of the road committee, and our road commissioner. And our road commissioner decided he didn't want anything to do with it.
You're not bouncing all over, wasting excuses here.
Ken Moral, you're next, and then Richard, sorry, he was way in the corner.
I, I sat over here and asked you, now, with all those final specs that you were, that's what were pushing for, were they in the BIM package? No, and you, and I, I've asked you a couple times, are these gonna be in that BIM pack? Oh, yes, oh, yes. I'm sorry, they weren't in the BIM package. How come they weren't in the BIM package?
How come you're yelling at us?
Because somebody who wrote the BIM package didn't know what they were doing.
How come you're yelling at us?
What, what's the answer?
Where's the respect?
What's that, please?
Turn it down, where's the respect?
I'm sorry, I'm a little hard of hearing, so therefore it comes up in my boards.
Thank you.
Answer, please.
The BIM specs were written right here.
Yeah.
With one select one, one road commissioner, and, I mean, one road committee member, and unfortunately, our road commissioner didn't want to get
Do you put more emphasis on the road committee chairman?
We made choices based on who was willing to help.
Who was willing to help?
And I love that, as soon as we
I didn't hear my name, well
As soon as we were ready to go, and, and moving things forward, that's when everyone else, after the fact, is all angry. We had a
I don't know why you just don't admit that this select board, you made a mistake. Oh, yes, oh, yes, it is.
I appreciate your input, I need to go to Richard.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Richard.
You made a big mistake.
That's fine.
You're spending more money than you really have.
Richard.
I would like to
She was the BIM committee person right there.
Is it my turn?
Yes, Richard, yes, thank you, we're going to, go ahead.
I would like to know if we can get an estimate of how much more extra it's gonna cost the taxpayers of the town of Houghton for the foolishness of two members of the select board and the road committee. Can you give me an estimate of how much more that's gonna be for the rest of the year?
That is no more foolish
It's already brought us twenty-one or eleven thousand dollars, how much more it's gonna cost?
Is that any more foolish than the road's committee?
Foolish! I don't want anyone to listen to you.
I had to listen to you, it's my meeting. Is that any more foolish than
I said what I want to say.
A road commissioner that chooses not to work with the select board, chooses to not be part of the BIM committee, and chooses not
BIM is the road commissioner, and it's a cake you're known out of.
And part of the road commissioner's
Very!
Not the law.
Part of the road commissioner's duty is to work with that road committee that's supposed to be helping him.
They're not helping, and you're not helping.
It's not the law.
Thank you. Kathleen? Can I just say one thing? The road commissioner and McNeil Farms is two different things. The road commissioner oversees what the contractors do. McNeil Farms is a contractor.
That's right.
Doesn't mean we hired him.
He's a contractor.
He's the road commissioner, and the select board decides who gets the bid.
You gotta customize, he didn't say it, although this is the last time around.
He did say it, but you said it.
Huh?
Because he said he didn't know how to do a bid.
No, that's wrong.
That's what she did, Leanne. I put it at a road meeting.
He has been on things before, and I see him
All right, she said it at a road Thank you very much for moving on to our executive session, that will be handling legal matters, thank you.
Foolish! Road committee, two members of the select board, foolish.
Richard?
Yeah, we have our executive session. It is Leanne. You guys didn't let him get away with it for twenty years. She told you guys how to run the show, you didn't know what you were doing.
Point at me.
Yeah, because the one that was on the BIM committee, the one that said it.
You know what's unfortunate, is Jeremy said that you were flawed by, you were the only one, and then turned around afterwards and said that you chose it on purpose. Where are we at, Charles, with the goal? This is, this is when you're a contract worker, you, so we asked you. My, my point was that, it's like you were the only one that knew anything about roads, and then, when we, and we drew up, we were looking to help them.
The road in Colville, it was twelve, twelve inches, it was small. So we said, well, it's quarter of two inches. But, I don't know, really, the other day, I had one assumption, it was very I mean, seeing she all, all days, I would do that. So
Did that? Here, who can be a witness? Hey, Karen? Karen? Can you be a witness?
I could be a witness, yeah.
Callings to sign it.
I'll witness, yes.
I need to sign, I call it here.
I'd like to know where that computer is, that laptop, is it our, our, our SMS? Jason, where is it? Nobody seems to know where it is. Nobody knows where it is.
Everything, everything We're done.
Every road meeting that we have been to, and every select board meeting that comes in, nobody knows where it is.
I'm trying to reach Leanne. Thank you, Paul.
Could you ask Leanne? Nobody knows where it is.
Thank you very much.
Did you, did they say when the next
Road committee meeting is?
Yeah.
I didn't see it either, but it is coming up, I think it's in, it's not this coming Monday, but it's
It's on Mondays?
Is that bad? We could be looking at it, it's usually Mondays. Thank you, make sure you come, thank you very much. Thanks. Yep. So we have a small thing to do, which we don't really do, we have Yep. Okay, we have adjourned the meeting, and I'm gonna shut off. And, and straight. Have a great day.